I would like to call on City Attorney David Leitnerberg and Chief of Police Cordwood.
Thank you, Mayor. As you know, we have been talking about dog issues for a long time. We are holding this work session tonight to talk about a particular aspect of what we might do with our dog code going forward. I told you early on, as this became very public and talked about, that we did have tools in our toolbox for the police to effectively prosecute this case, and they did and they have. This also exposed certain things that could be better. We are hoping to talk about some of those tonight. We're talking about recommendations. We're also going to be talking about some of the recommendations that have come out of the community in this space. What I want to impress upon you as we set out is that this is one aspect of our dog code. To be specific, this is the police portion of our dog code. There are dog nuisance issues separate in the code. There are dog containment issues separate in the code, and a number of other things separate. Those are code enforcement, and we are not dealing with those this evening. We're talking about the tools that the PD needs. If some of those ideas come up, if you have particular recommendations or desires, we would love to hear those alongside your thoughts, recommendations, and desires with the stuff that we are presenting.
Okay.
What I wanted to start with is to give you a summary of what our current code here actually does look like. I printed each of you a copy of the entire section. To be perfectly honest, is convoluted. Some of it is overbroad, some of it is subject to faulty definitions, and honestly, some of it's just obsolete. It's old. It's code that was dealing with a different city at a different time, and we're going to try and call out some of those, but in general, those are the things that we also hope to clean up, and we would bring back all of those as recommendations in a future ordinance. There are, oh, I should have counted. There are a small number of violations in the code. They are at 6.04.150, and I've got them coming up based on their sublettering. Again, these are all enforced or enforceable by police. Dog at large is our leash law. It requires dogs to be leashed. It comes with a penalty not less than $5 and increases by certain amounts, up to $250. It has dogs as public nuisance, and public nuisance has a definition, as you can maybe see, and I barely can. Dog amounts to a public nuisance when it bites a person, when it chases vehicles or persons, when it damages property, when it trespasses on private property, when it commits frequent or prolonged noises, and when it's at large, if it has done so three times in 12 months. Then it amounts to a public nuisance, which, as you can see, is $25 or $100. These ones are confusing. Their definitions are confusing, and they're hard to administrate. Repeatedly, as shown by convictions, means that every one of these would have to go through the municipal court to amount there. It's problematic, and it's not useful. There is also significant overlap in both the language of this and the practice of this with our code enforcement requirements. So PD doesn't know whether PD should do this or code enforcement should do this. Some of them, they can both do, some of them only one can do, and it's difficult. The next violation is troubling in my mind. It seems straightforward, but has injured other domestic animals. It's actually written as ownership of a dog that has injured other domestic animals. So the point in time with which this can be enforced is forever. It's overbroad and challenging. Dogs need to have a license attached to their collar. As you know, licensing has been something that has ebbed and flowed and doesn't depend on our organization. This next one falls alongside that, keeping an unlicensed dog. These all depend on county licensing practices and whether the county is able to maintain a licensing program. This is totally out of our control, but the police can enforce against it. I would go back and show you that again, but I can't seem to. The chief just pointed out that the fine for that, oh, there it is, for keeping an unlicensed dog is greater than a dog that bites somebody, which we put up above. Confusing, mismatched. A dog unvaccinated for rabies. A refusal to surrender a dog that has a suspicion of rabies or has been unvaccinated for rabies. Vicious dog unconfined. This is the same as a leash law, but for a dog that has been determined to be vicious. Now, that also sounds good at first blush and is good at first blush, but there are some problems with our code with regard to what a vicious dog really means that we'll talk about a little bit later. Vicious dogs, apparently by definition, are required to have warning signs, and failure to maintain those warning signs is a violation here. And then possession of a fighting dog. These pen requirements, again, they're enforced by police, and these apply specifically to a vicious dog. It makes for confusing application and something that PD is not going, I'm not pushing buttons for you well, something that PD is not going to easily find the time or the energy to deal with. Vicious dogs are allowed under our code to be tattooed. That's a relatively obsolete practice, and as the chief was joking to me earlier, do you want to be the person to go check a dog's lip for a tattoo when it's been determined to be vicious? I don't think that's a good idea. There are provisions for forfeiture of bail for the owner of a vicious dog, and I honestly cannot tell you what the intention was at the time of this code. Now, the status of the municipal court and how they dealt with jail may have been different at that time. It certainly was earlier than this time, but the inability to forfeit bail is either just bad language or means that a person can be held jailed with no bail for vicious dog, which seems incommensurate with our current practices. The code does allow for impoundment, both for vicious dogs and for dogs suspected of rabies, actually for dogs that are unlicensed, which we know the licensing portion is a problem. And actually, the impoundment sections are confusingly worded and don't give very clear direction for how police are supposed to go about that impoundment. We found ourselves in that situation with regard to the wolf dogs at large in the city. We made this work. It was a little bit of an awkward fit. You'll see that the chief has some proposals for making this more straightforward. The code requires owners of a vicious dog to insure those dogs, and this is actually another penalty in this section of code that is not with the rest of the violations. Failure to do so is $100 per day. This is something that we are recently trying out for our first time in anybody's memory. And this section of code also includes some procedures that at this time are largely obsolete. It calls for a very specific uniform citation. It calls for penalties, including licensing, impoundment, and maintenance, which are not bad. They're just, they just deal with an old system, and it, I can't see what it calls for. Trial with no jury and no appeal. No jury is fine as these run through the municipal court, but no appeal is not permitted. We can't have code like that. I'll get there. Thank you.
So as City Attorney Leitnerberg and I were discussing what provisions or amendments we'd like to make to the code, we looked to agencies, jurisdictions, up and down the Willamette Valley that have successful dog code provisions that we would think would be a good fit for us here in McMinnville. So one of the things that we came across was an unprovoked attack, because that's one of the things that we at the police department get called to deal with most often when it comes to animals, you know, primarily dogs. But when you hear me talk about some of these recommendations over the next portion of the presentation, you're going to hear me say "animal" instead of just "dog," because unfortunately, we're called to deal with an ever-increasing variety of animals. I know that the state has put a prohibition on the keeping and importation of, you know, certain exotic species. That doesn't mean they don't exist. I can tell you from personal experience, before I came to the city of McMinnville, I had fishing game troopers go to an apartment in Portland to deal with an apartment full of, I can't remember the number of varieties of poisonous snakes that were unlawful to be kept, but still in this person's possession and discovered when he disposed of one in a dumpster, thinking it was deceased, and one of the other apartment residents finding it not deceased in the dumpster. So you're going to hear me say "animal" again and again, but one of the things that we would really like to do is add provisions for when animals attack other animals or other people, for example. So one of the recommendations is we would like to add an unprovoked attack ordinance. So a person may not allow their animal to make an unprovoked attack on another person or animal, and that would be a Class B misdemeanor. And I apologize, there is a typo on this slide. It would be a Class B misdemeanor if it simply attacked and injured the other animal. We would like to see that elevated to a Class A misdemeanor if it attacked and killed another animal. And then provisions for offenders providing restitution to owners of animals that were attacked by their animal. Can you drive for me?
Mayor, are we waiting till the end to ask questions?
I think we're fine to field questions if you would like to.
Okay, let me flip back to that slide.
Sure. Go back. Well, let's see. David, can you go back?
Thank you, Mayor.
Counsel Chenoweth.
Thank you, Mayor. My question would be on the must-make full restitution for actual damages caused. Will there be some sort of scale in there, I would assume, to define what the value of a cat or the value of a dog that has been killed is worth? I mean, if they go to the vet and need repair, we can assess a value, but if they're killed, how do we assess that value?
Restitution broadly is assessed by the municipal court. I watched our municipal judge do that in recent dog cases, where he asked victims what restitution they were looking for. He did not find cause at that time to adjust what those requests were. I imagine if something were exorbitant, he would. So if we provide no schedule, it'll be at the discretion of the judge. Generally, that's fine and functional with restitution. If you were looking to do something more precise, honestly, it sounds complicated to me, but I don't see why we could not assess something.
Any other questions? Counsel Peralta.
Thank you. Excuse me. Chief, do you have a sense of how much time your professional staff spends dealing with issues related to dog control?
I would tell you that it ebbs and flows. From my understanding, granted, I'm coming in from a six-month window of personal observation, but from my staff, I understand that our last six months has been quite busy with animal control functions, and then, you know, we may have a number of calls and then go months without one of these type of events. So there's no, like, cycle to it. Like many criminal offenses that we deal with, there's an ebb and a flow.
So one of the concerns that I have, and I appreciate you bringing this forward, but one of the concerns that I have is that we are providing a service level because we don't have an existing revenue stream to address the costs associated with the enforcement actions that your staff has to take. We don't have a revenue stream to cover the costs of doing that, and so this is an area where, whether you're talking about dog control or dealing with cats or other types of animal nuisance, I feel like it's falling onto the police, and it's not necessarily the most efficient use of your staff time. And I'm also concerned that we're really not meeting the needs of the community with the current framework, which is not having some kind of more formal program. And my understanding, which is based on, you know, conversations that I had when I first came to the city, that at the time that I came on, we were probably getting $7,000 to $10,000 a year through the county licensing program. And I know that that has kind of fallen by the wayside, and there's been some talk about the county re-upping that. But when, in preparation for this meeting, I was going through the Oregon Code, and cities have the option of adopting their own licensing fees, and then if they do, then they're not, the county's jurisdiction kind of evaporates within the city. And so I was wondering if there's been any conversation, or if you think it would be fruitful to have conversations about whether or not the city should consider setting its own licensing fee program, maybe setting it at the same rate of what the county charges, and seeing if we can use that to create a revenue stream that would help develop a more robust program to address some of the problems that we're having.
That's not something that the city attorney and I discussed in preparation for tonight's presentation. It's not something that I would be opposed to exploring. I would have some questions about where that work would get done, because I don't know that, I do know that, at least in the police department at the moment, we don't have the capacity to absorb that additional administrative work that would come with that type of program. I would also say that our job is public safety, and there are many activities that your police department is called to on a daily basis that we don't have a funding stream to support. But we are the only 24-hour, seven-day-a-week problem-solving services that people have access to. So when we approached this, my vision was to find ways to make this process easier and more familiar for my staff to navigate, so that we weren't, we've been presented with one extreme example over the last six months, right? And that example has absorbed hundreds of hours of just my staff time, and that doesn't count the court staff, the city prosecutor, the city attorney's time navigating that. And so I think my focus has been primarily on how can we simplify those with familiar processes to law enforcement staff while making those processes easier and more streamlined for other departments of the city to administer to.
Thank you, Chief. And by the way, I don't want my comments to be sort of misinterpreted as being critical of the staff. It's more, is this really the appropriate role, and do we have the revenue stream in place to do the job that people kind of expect? And in the area of dog control, cat control, small animals, I just feel like in the last 10 years, I've seen a lot of problems that really haven't been mitigated, that would be the kinds of things that a local government would often deal with. And we don't have the resources as a city to deal with those problems currently, and the fact that we don't have a functioning licensing program, I think, contributes to that. And while I realize there would be a cost to launching that type of a program, there would also be significant revenues coming in as a result of it, and so I just wonder if it would be worth it. And I appreciate that you don't have the staff time to maybe even do the analysis, but I do think it's something that we should look at as a body, if not tonight, just going forward, because this is a problem that's not going to go away, and it may take some years for the county to get their program up and running. Thank you.
Counsel Chenoweth.
Couple of things. Thank you, Mayor. Great comment, Sal. I also have been to many of the most recent county commission meetings, and in this budget cycle, they actually put funds away in their budget for the potential of re-bringing back a dog control. And one of the things that they talked about, I don't want to put words in their mouth or say it's going to happen, so don't be misconstrued what I'm saying, this was just in the budget, not necessarily going to happen. They just had to allocate it if they wanted to, so they could later. But they did talk about this year, they really want to change the entire way in which they're doing their fee structure and doing their licensing, going to an online process and a better way to actually implement it. So I think it would behoove us, I think we need to do this, I'm on board with you 100%, but I think it would behoove us to work collaboratively with the county, because I think we might be able to find ways through economies of scale to make it more cost worthwhile while at the same time providing the services that our local folks demand and want and thought was already present. The other question I wanted, I did want to ask you, if I could, when it comes to restitution, when a situation like this presents itself, do, and South, you're bringing this up, brought it to my mind, so thank you, do we, as a city, ask for restitution for what we've had to put out from the person that caused the situation?
Do you mean particularly, for example, PD resources?
Whatever. That was part of the cost associated with what happened. Is that something we could, as, you know, in looking for a revenue stream, to me, I always want to put it back on the people that are causing us to spend the money, right? So is that something we can do, and am I opening a larger can of worms?
You're definitely opening a larger can of worms. If, say, for example, city property of some sort was damaged by an animal, we could absolutely claim restitution, and I think would in those cases. As far as administrative costs of enforcement, I've never heard of something like that. I don't know how it could be done specifically, or whether it could, but it is a fair question.
Probably through increasing the fee.
Oh, sorry. I went one slide too far on my computer. I was, I was one behind us. City Attorney Leitnerberg talked about the definition of vicious animal at large, and when we boil down what we're dealing with, when we're dealing with these animals, we're really dealing with animals that have a proven history of being a danger to the community, being a danger to people, being a danger to other pets, being a danger to domestic animals. And I don't think the current provisions in the code deal with that in a fashion that really drives home the point of what it is we're actually dealing with. When we're potentially finding somebody more for not having their dog license attached to the collar than we are for having a vicious animal roaming freely, I think that the priorities are out of whack in that case. And so I would like to see the vicious animal at large ordinance simplified, so that once the animal does meet the definition for vicious animal, and that owner has now allowed it to roam freely or become at large again, elevate that to a misdemeanor-level crime, which allows law enforcement more options in their response to that kind of event. Yes, please.
Just to add to it real quickly, since the topic is going to come up again, one of the community suggestions with regard to this particular item is that we're careful about the language that we use, and an owner who causes or allows these things to happen gets increasing penalties. If it's one dog, and then another, and then another, not only do we not track dog names in our court system or descriptions or anything, it would make clear that an owner responsible, that clarification is one that we haven't not talked in depth about, but I wanted to bring it to your attention because it's a good clarification.
Impoundment of dogs under the current code, I think it's outlined, we have the ability to do that, I don't have a question about that. It's the next line below that that I would really like to address. What the code is lacking is protections for our city staff, our law enforcement officers, when they encounter those animals that are so diseased, so injured, so aggressive, or so dangerous that they cannot be safely caught, right? Those can take a wide variety of different, I mean, fighting dogs would be a good example. You can look through some animal control-related history in our state of Oregon, where law enforcement officers have been dispatched to homes to deal with rampaging chimpanzees, and wound up actually having to shoot these chimpanzees because they are so dangerous when they're enraged that there's no other way to deal with them. And we don't have any provisions in our code to protect our staff for those circumstances where they have to deal with an animal that is in that kind of state, either so dangerous, so aggressive, sick, injured, so dangerous that it poses such a risk to the person to deal with. I think we need to build some protections into the code for our officers and for, you know, some of those folks that we may call to help us with animal-related investigations. The Oregon Humane Society, for example, has law enforcement staff that are available, they are an offshoot of the Oregon State Police, to help deal with animal abuse-related instances, and I think we need to build in protections for those folks in dealing with those circumstances. I think that vicious dog behavior levels should be defined in the code, and what those behaviors are have corresponding responses from law enforcement. You know, if your dog or your animal threatens another animal, I can see that being a violation level. If it threatens people or someone's service animal, you know, I see an increased violation there. If it bites somebody, I think that that's probably time to consider a criminal-level violation of the code. And if that dog seriously injures or kills your other, your animal, or shows fighting behavior, like the fighting dogs that we were discussing on the last behavior, like the fighting dogs that we were discussing on the last slide, I think, again, a Class A misdemeanor is probably appropriate response for dealing with that situation. In response to those levels of behavior, I think that the code should consider requirements for dogs engaging in Level 1 and 2 behavior to provide secure fencing and containment for those kind of dogs. If your dog bites someone or another animal, I think that if it's not on your property or under your immediate control within your house, you should have to muzzle and leash it when it's off your property. It has a record of engaging in behavior that's dangerous.
So I have a question about that. So quite a few times, seeing somebody walking a larger dog that's on a leash that's taken care of, and someone has a small dog that is a lot of times on the retractable leashes that goes after the larger dog.
That wouldn't be what I would consider an unprovoked attack, right? That little dog had actually gone and engaged in some kind of behavior to provoke a response from the other animal. I'm talking about instances where the dog or animal, I mean, we say dog because that's the most common, common animal we're going to deal with, but, you know, without provocation attacks another person or attacks an animal. They're walking through the park, and they bite the kid for no discernible reason, right? Which are instances that we investigate. The dog gets loose and kills the flock of ducks for no discernible reason. And it's pretty hard to imagine a circumstance where a duck could probably incite or provoke a dog to attack it.
Nope, but a goose, a goose could. Counselor Chenoweth, did you have a question?
I did, thank you, Mayor. Just walk me through penalty, misdemeanor A, B, C.
As in the level, or how that works?
What's the penalty for each one of those?
Well, so, B, or I'm sorry, C misdemeanor is the lowest level of misdemeanor, followed by B, followed by A. Each level of a misdemeanor is a, it's a custodial arrest, a custodial arrestable offense, right? You could actually take physical custody of somebody and arrest them for committing a misdemeanor-level offense. More commonly, citations would be issued for those levels of offense. And then, are you asking about the penalty on the court end, or?
What I'm more interested in is, I went through a situation with a dog, my own dog, that I ended up having to put down, that had several instances of unprovoked attacks, not to anybody outside of my home, and not to people, it was to things in my home. And what I'm more interested in is not setting up a situation where it was unknown at the time that the attack occurred, it was unprovoked, but it was a Level A misdemeanor according to our books. And now this owner, who had no idea this dog was this way, because they hadn't shown any indication of that before, is facing jail time.
So just because an offense is charged at the outset as a misdemeanor doesn't mean that it's always prosecuted at that level. The prosecutor's office at the court has the ability to reduce violations that start out as criminal violations to infractions later on.
Okay. So there's lots of leeway, and assuming, we can make a safe assumption that our prosecutors are not going to prosecute to the fullest extent on a first offense.
I think that's a fair assumption. I wanted to add to it, the state, the state, in our code, we talk about vicious dogs. In the ORS, they talk about dangerous dogs. And one of the distinctions that we talked about recently was that a vicious dog is defined as one with a known history of doing something, which means that things only happen upon a second instance, a second knowable instance. Now, our own code has more leeway. When we define vicious dogs, it has that, a dog with a known propensity, but it also has any dog which, without provocation, attacks or bites, or has attacked or bitten a human being or domestic animal. So ours goes further, those definitions do contemplate that eventuality, and what we eventually do with definitions will matter.
Can I answer your question, Chris? I kind of thought so.
Would we be better off than not to have the extra wording and have it be specifically for a dog with a known propensity?
When we build code like this, we're talking about a trade-off. If the code allows for sort of a first violation situation, like our code does, there are situations where you want it and you use it. If our code doesn't, there are situations where you'll wish you had it. But it also prevents sort of the situation that you're talking about, which is a very reasonable one to be preventing. It's the reason the state does it that way. There are trade-offs, yes.
Counselor Tocolski?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. You kind of, City Attorney Leidenberg, you had answered part of my question, because I was curious, if a dog has not previously offended, how do we know it's vicious? And do the vicious dog rules apply at that time? Or does it have to offend? And then it becomes a known vicious dog, and then the rules apply? That's where I was getting hung up.
That's definitely how it goes under the state code. They don't come out and say that this is a second bite thing, but the way the definitions play out, I think that's how the majority of people understand them.
And that's also how we're applying that within McMinnville, or propose to do so?
That's how we apply the state codes. Our code allows for more. And we recently used the fact that our code allows for more.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, go ahead.
We've touched on this a little bit. Again, I think that we need to build in provisions of the code for protecting our folks when they're dealing with those dangerous animals at large that are so dangerous that they cannot be captured without significant risk to the officer. Or I'm going to guess that there are some times where citizens are going to be confronted by an animal so dangerous that they need to protect themselves from it. And I think we need to build in protections to our officers and our citizenry that when they're confronted with that, they have the ability to reasonably respond to the situation that they're confronted with.
Now, because we had such a group of motivated residents, I wanted to make sure that you got their recommendations more or less wholesale. They met together as a group, and they put these recommendations in a letter, they did a lot of work and research, so I wanted you to be able to see them. This first one is what we talked about earlier. I, largely, we're talking about the same thing, escalating penalties. They want to make sure that those apply to owners, not just individual dogs. The next one, they want better enforcement of licensing rules and collection of penalties. You understand the challenges and difficulties there? We heard the same from you. The three, they would like the city to contract for more kennel space. You also know the issues there. Understand, in the past, the county had more kennel space. One can hope that that's part of what they may consider propping up. We just don't know. We are beholden to some situations that are outside of our control right now. The fourth one is part of the conversation that we were just having. Better definitions about dangerous dog or potentially dangerous dog, those are out of the ORS, and we don't have those same definitions in our own code. To a certain degree, the distinction between those two terms could be beneficial if we incorporated something like that. It would also then be redundant. But yes, our definition of vicious dog, it needs some work. They have specifically requested, did I miss one?
I think so.
Oh, sorry. Clear restrictions for dangerous dogs is, is kind of a play off of the last one. When you saw the chief's suggestions for increasing penalties, they would like to see vaccination requirements, sterilization requirements, containment and muzzling requirements. And I thought that they had said microchipping, but I don't see that in their requests now. Next, local favorite, wolves and wolf hybrids outright prohibited in the city. We've not had an opportunity to talk about the administration of this, but I will come and say at the outset that I believe that would likely be very challenging. I'm not aware of programs for breed determination that have been successful and upheld anywhere else. This is one of those situations where we could be on the bleeding edge of something, but whether we want to be is something else entirely. The, in my mind, the lift to explore this, to see what's required and what's evidentially reasonable, would require experts and such thorough vetting that I don't see how we could prop up this program in the near term. But of course, we're bringing this before you, because if this is something near and dear to everybody's heart, maybe this is something we look at.
Do we know what other cities do? Do other cities have their own dog control? Or is it generally county? Besides just Yamhill County, what are we doing in other places?
With regard to wolf hybrids?
To wolf or any licensing?
Like breed restriction for municipalities?
Yeah, and licensing.
I'm not aware of any municipality that has successfully navigated a breed restriction ordinance in the research that I've done. I could not find an example of anybody that had successfully instituted an ordinance prohibiting breed specifics, or, I'm sorry, specific breeds, I should say.
And finally, I request that the city coordinate for additional license fees that goes to the city directly. I think that's similar to comments that I heard earlier. That is the-
Counselor Tocolski?
Of our presentation, and I would love to hear thoughts and recommendations.
Counselor Tocolski?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Could we go back to the, I'll call it the self-defense clause for a moment, where you have perhaps city staff and/or private citizens in a condition? Would someone articulate reasonably that a, I'll say, in this case, animal, because we're not saying just dogs, was a threat to that person enough that they needed to destroy it so that they don't end up in a situation where that owner is making them liable for that?
I think that you would apply similar standards that you would for self-defense, that based on a reasonable belief that that animal posed a significant risk of physical injury, serious physical injury and/or death, that then those, you know, once that criteria was met, that, you know, action could be taken, right? It would be a similar application to, to the reasonableness standard outlined in those statutes.
As a follow-up to that, would, say someone had used a firearm, would unauthorized use of a firearm within city limits apply? That's pretty specific, I know, sorry.
While it could apply, I don't know that it must apply. For example, that is a, that is an ordinance that doesn't have a mandatory arrest coupled with it. And I think that I would rely on the discretion of my staff to make the right decision in those moments about what was most important.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Counselor Chenoweth?
Thank you, Mayor. So often, I read on social media over the last few months, that, and I'm not saying that it's true, in fact, that's my question, but I read often on social media that wolf hybrids are banned in cities in Oregon. And what I heard you guys just say now is that, in fact, there is no such bans out there. Did I hear that correctly? And so was what the often repeated refrain on the internet was actually just urban myth?
I certainly don't know with regard to wolf hybrids. I'm not going to make any claim about that. I'm not aware of a, of a breed-specific restriction broadly being upheld.
Okay. In terms of, on the discussion of what, what your, my thoughts are, what you've proposed, I guess one question I would have, are you, is your proposal going to be to basically get rid of what we have and replace it with these thoughts put into code form that you have presented?
That's part of the request. We, barring, barring your requests and additional information right now, we would go forward with the chief's proposal, trying to codify something like that, that worked in our code, taking out those things that I've called out as particular problems, and generally doing a cleanup, and making it functional to serve that purpose. And any additional purposes that you want us to roll in or consider or present later about?
Well, at this point, I don't have anything to add. I think it would be cleaner if we basically this and started fresh, but, you know, I don't know in terms of time-wise, what is more efficient for you folks. Thank you for your time, and thank you for this presentation.
Addressing fees at the same time? Increasing, can we increase fees at the same time that we change policies?
You mean looking at internal licensing?
And, go ahead, penalties, fees.
Oh, penalty fees. In the incorporating of the chief's recommendations, I hadn't thought about that specifically. My mind was to not include that list of fees at all, since they're clearly old and meager. I wouldn't, suddenly thinking on the spot, discount the idea of certain mandatory fines. I don't like the idea of codifying dollar amounts generally, and would say by resolution of the city council. But yeah, some of these could have attached fines.
The criminal level offenses, and please feel free to jump in and help me here, since I'm not an attorney, I'm just a police officer, but would give the court discretion in the fine levied, especially about repetitive behavior. It would also give the court the additional tool to use bench probation as a way to manage and control owner behavior for the duration of the probation, should someone be found guilty of a violation of the code. The current infraction-level violations in the code don't afford the court that additional tool. It would also simplify processes for law enforcement in the application and issuance of a search warrant to seize dogs that were the offending animal, or whatever animal it would be in that circumstance.
You said that we don't track the dogs right now, and we don't keep the breed of them or the names of them. Is that something that, you've talked to municipal court, is that something that we're going to be doing in the future? Or be allowed to do with our hopefully new software?
The municipal court's tracking ability does not support dogs by name and description. That's part of why this description of making sure that the code is aimed particularly at owners of such dogs is important, because it allows our court, in their current status, to do that. Now, because some of our current language does not, is a little bit dog-specific, they made an effort, our court has made recent efforts, to make those descriptions, it doesn't make them easily searchable or easily applicable to a later history and things like that.
Okay. Counselor Chenoweth?
I'm not sure I completely followed your, your discussion about the fines portion of this, but I would like to say that what's in our code doesn't make a whole lot of sense to have a minimum- doesn't make a whole lot of sense to have a minimum of $5 for a fine. Or even a maximum of $2.50 doesn't seem reasonable to me. Having fines in which it's more expensive if the dog bites, if somebody's dog bites one of my dogs than if somebody's dog bites me, doesn't make a whole lot of sense. So were you saying we will increase these fines? Or you're saying that because we are going to be putting them in as misdemeanor classes, that that's going to give the judge the ability to assess fines that potentially are greater? I really wasn't following all of that.
The chief made the point that the misdemeanors allow the judge to do that. The PD, the individual officers, would not be ticketing. They wouldn't be assessing fines on the citation level. That is something that we could cook back into this, is what I'm saying. That's what the fines in there originally would have been like, although those were also tied to a court process. Allowing this to be just based on the misdemeanors, just based on the violation level, gives the court the leeway to impose a monetary penalty.
Would you have wording in whatever you're creating that will instruct the judge to impose some monetary fine? Or is you're going to leave that completely open-ended to where we could end up in cases where no fine is a consistent pattern for these types of cases?
I don't know that that's easily answerable. We allow a lot of discretion within the court between the prosecution and the judge with situations for plea agreements and things like that. There are situations where certain fines could be made mandatory, and those are not incredibly common.
Are there ever minimums put?
Yes.
Any other questions, councillors? Anything else? What was that? You'd like to know what you need from us today?
Besides, go ahead. We, we need to understand your particular and pet desires for where this goes in the future. If we have covered it with the chief's recommendations and some of the rest of our discussion, then I think I know where we're going. If we have missed anything that you hold near and dear that we would love to see in future code, that's great also. And, not that we talked about it, but if you've been waiting in the wings with some other restrictions that may be more appropriate to a code enforcement and dog conversation in the future, you can by all means let us know that too.
Do we have anything right now? Okay, so we'll let you know if we have any concerns. Otherwise, I think we're good. I think you also understand that we would like, if there is some ability to make sure there are some fines, that it's there. So I guess that's it for tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I've got to close the work session at 6:53 PM. And we will be back at 7:00.
Recording stopped.
Hello, how are you?
Good.
Hello.
Looking good.
Oh, it's long, I guess. Oh, okay. Was it with the PAC?
Can you find out?
Ah.
I thought, I thought, like, I got a rose.
I don't think you were. I'll remind you of what the conclusion was. It's what it's about. We can meet the housing, we can industrial, we can not personally bully or recommend. We don't need to be, we should be. I don't think you were there. No, did you have COVID? COVID's gone bad again. Maybe it's some other vaccine disease. No. I should say, yes, you were there and you promised all sorts of things.
You and you're bringing cookies next time.
That's what I mean. I'm sure, I'm sure there were promises made. You know, there was a package they walked through, through PowerPoint. Then they do a planning mission. I can send you the video for planning mission. They did the same thing in planning mission last week. The video, no. Yeah, the videos for planning mission. We don't have, we don't have kids in California, so we need GoPros.
We need GoPros.
Also, I do, if you're interested.
Yeah.
This was, oh, you sent that? Yeah, so this was. So the first part of this is the response to, this is 2023, and she goes through.
Yeah, and she notices all the things.
Yes, and it's, and it's, yeah, and so she provided, and then-
But to me, that was all-
Oh, there it is. Oops.
Yeah. No, I printed it.
Oh, you sent me the other one from April 24th, sorry, where Amber provided lots of notes about this. And then, and then you guys went through everything. Yeah.
Yeah, this is, this is the-
So it incorporated YCAP's concern.
When he received this, then he submitted.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is that this by FAA was done after Amber provided those notes to Jen. It was incorporated here, so I was like that, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. We're all, there's a computer.
Recording in progress.
They saw a lot of, I think they did, yeah. And that's how, you know. To be able to be in, exactly, it's this side that they want to, you know. I don't think it's, no.
Good evening. I'll now call the city council meeting to order at 7 o'clock. Claudia?
Council Gary?
Good evening.
Council Cunningham?
Here.
Council Tocolski?
Present.
Council Chenoweth?
Here.
Council Payne is absent this evening. Council President Peralta?
Here.
And Mayor Morris?
Here. If you're able to stand, please stand for the pledge. I've asked Jenny Berg, our Parks and Rec and Library Director, to lead us in the pledge tonight. Next, we're going to go to comments from community members. Any interested audience members are invited to provide comments, and any comment provided that requires some type of follow-up will be assigned to a staff member. Anyone may speak on any topic other than a matter in litigation, a land use decision that is or will be in front of the city council, or a matter scheduled for public hearing at some future date. Comments will be limited to four minutes per person for a total of 32 minutes. If you're on Zoom and wish to speak, please use the raise your hand feature or chat feature and send a chat to the city recorder team. Once your turn is up, we will announce your name and unmute your mic. Please announce your name and the city you live in for the record. We will start with those who are pre-registered. Claudia, do we have anybody signed up?
No one has signed up.
Is there anybody on Zoom?
None that have raised their hand.
Is there anybody in the city hall or civic hall tonight that want to speak? Okay. I think that might be a first for me. All right, so we're going to move on to reports from councillors on committees and board assignments, and then we'll also hear from department heads. Tonight, I'm going to start to my right with Council Cunningham.
Yes, I actually just confirmed with Heather Richards that I was sick for the PAC, so I was not able to go. But she is sending me the video, so I will diligently watch that. And otherwise, all my other committees took a summer vacation.
Council Chenoweth?
I'm going to say the same thing, but shorter. Nothing to report.
Council Peralta?
Nothing to report.
Mayor Morris? I have a report. My monthly, my report, since our last meeting, is I was able to join Celestial Hill for a ribbon cutting on July 23rd. They opened their tasting room on Third Street in the old Piranha and Daughter space. MEDP has coordinated some tours. We were able to tour Skyline Homes. We were able to see the process from start to finish. Their homes are a cost-effective option, especially for those that own their own property. I also had a mayor's and city manager's, state leader's meeting about regional water. It was a really good meeting, and we were able to meet for two hours. Had members of the COG with us as well. And then we went up Meadow Lake Road and toured the treatment plant. Our water reclamation facility had a ribbon cutting celebrating the completion of their $21 million solids treatment, a capacity improvement. And I was able to attend that ribbon cutting as well. We'll probably hear from GIOF on that. Last Thursday, I was asked to ring the opening bell for the farmer's market, and I worked the city table with Noel and Evan from Planning. We gave a lot of cloth bags and shared information about the innovation campus, as well as city committees. Friday, I had a meeting with Gustavo Guerrero, who works for Senator Merkley's office. We did a check-in in regards to, we do still have a ask that is still in the works that we still may see towards the end of September. The end date is September 30th. So if we're going to get it, we will hear between now and September 30th. We also checked in about some timeframes for our next round of asks for the federal, through the federal delegation. Yesterday, I was able to attend a Yamhill County Economic Alliance meeting where we are gathering leaders to talk about a way that we in Yamhill County can work together to increase the economy and also work with OGECC and Business Oregon, who has some grants and some funding for that. And I also had a meeting yesterday with interim superintendent Courtney Ferreira. We talked about processes and meetings between the city and improving our relationships there and possible joint projects. And my volunteer opportunities between last time and now were very fun. A few days in the information booth at Yamhill County Fair and volunteering for National Night Out in the obstacle course with MACPD, which was great, so. I did not do the course. I just got to play with the little kids.
I can attest, she did a very good job to manage that entire crowd. It was significant.
It was a busy night, but it was fun. Council Gary?
Thank you. Visit McMinnville. We'll be meeting next week, so I'll have an update at our next meeting. MURAC, again, had no meeting, which makes that since April, but we were provided an update that I could read to you regarding the Northwest Rubber site. The staff is currently working on the negotiations still. The meetings are occurring every two weeks with the goal of having the mutually agreeable development agreement ready for adoption in December. Alpine Avenue Phase Two, we submitted requests to the 25 state legislative session and the federal CIP program for $995,701,001, respectively, for the Alpine Avenue Phase Two project. All state transportation requests were deferred to the 26th legislative session. And we recently learned that our federal request did not make the cut. We'll continue to work on Alpine Avenue funding in the 26th state short session and continue to seek out necessary resources to get that project done. The downtown master plan update has been delayed to January 2026. We drafted RFP and we're ready to start the consultant procurement process for the downtown master plan, but we put that project on hold. We had a member, longtime member Lisa Poole, let us know she won't be rejoining or resigning, so we'll be looking at more openings in that group. And we'll get back going meeting in September. That's MURAC. And then on the, with my, with my PAC hat on for the bond we put on for November, I went ahead and requested time on the McMinnville School Board's agenda and presented to them last night and requested their formal endorsement. And they unanimously approved that request and gave their endorsement for the project. So the McMinnville School Board will be endorsing that effort. That's my report.
I just want to clarify the federal ask that didn't make the cut. I think our only federal ask, which federal ask?
Alpine Avenue.
Alpine Avenue?
Oh, okay, perfect.
Alpine did not make the cut.
Want to make sure.
Yes, okay.
Thank you for clarifying.
Got it.
Council Tocolski?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. The airport commission did not meet this time, so I do have a YCOM update. Planning continues for the 2026, 2027 budget process so that cities can plan ahead further instead of planning behind or planning at the time of budget season. So I think Patty's doing a great job allowing us to plan ahead. The airshow planning continues for the end of September for this year, and then planning is well underway for next year, which it seems. There might actually be an agreement between the airport and Evergreen to bring the largest airshow yet, and it would potentially include the U.S. Navy Blue Angels once again. So that would be great. Tax to 911 is getting closer. I did want to emphasize, this is not costing the city of McMinnville anything. It's a new function. However, it's already paid for through the 911 excise tax, so that's good. Law enforcement records management are starting to work further together for Yamhill County MACPD, allowing those two entities to work together under the same system, as well as the city of Yamhill and eventually the city of Carlton as well. So that's a positive on the cooperation teamwork front. There will be an after-action review conducted for the propane tank incident. It's going to be conducted by MAC Fire District. They're going to figure out what was the mission that they were tasked with? How did they do? Where did they fail? Where did they succeed? What needs to change for future activity? I think they did a great job in general, all the emergency responders did. And there were a number of questions about Yamhill County alerts. We don't have a reverse 911 system, but there is a emergency alert system that you can sign up for. It's called everbridge.net, and I have a link if anybody needs it. And you place your area of residence, and if you're within an area, like last time it was, I think, a 1-mile radius of the propane tank, you should have received a emergency alert had you been signed up. Last one is county law and county fire going live with their new radio channels in August, so that should also provide improved communication and improved clarity for everybody. So I think it's a lot of positive stuff going on through YCOM. That's it.
Thank you. Attorney David Lightenberg, do you have anything to report?
Very little, Mayor. Most of what I've been working on is on your agenda this evening, and I just wanted to remind you that we are a little over a month away from what I'm expecting is to be some paternity leave. I will, again, make sure that you are filled in on how we are going to cover legal needs while that is occurring.
Chief Cordwin.
I was going to also mention National Night Out last Tuesday night. I thought that it was very well-attended, and having attended those events with other agencies, I will tell you that I much prefer the way that we do it here in McMinnville, where we have everybody come to one location to celebrate National Night Out instead of traveling to individual locations around the city, because my staff actually get to spend time with people in the community that's lost when you travel around to individual locations around town. So I much prefer the way that we do it here, and I thought that we had a great event and great turnout. The other thing I would add is a piece of information that I apologize for not having for you when you asked me earlier in the presentation. Luckily, I have people here looking out for me. Since January of this year, we've had over 500 animal-related calls for service. 350 of those have been titled "animal nuisance", which can cover a lot of different behavior. And then we've had 20 instances that were termed as an "animal bite."
Thank you and your officers and everyone else for your service. Director Richards.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and councilors. I wanted to share two things with you. We are working with the McMinnville Economic Vitality Leadership Council on the sort of 50% review of the MAC Town 2032 Economic Development Strategic Plan. So I know you're going into goal-setting to look at strategic planning. There's two documents related to that. One is the one that was adopted by the city council, just called MAC Town 2032 Strategic Plan. City council also adopted the MAC Town 2032 Economic Development Strategic Plan. That's to address the economic prosperity priority that's in our six priorities. And the MEVLC was chartered to move that forward. So if you don't know, we're 50% of the way through when we adopted these strategic plans in 2032, so we're having that sort of historic moment right now with the MEVLC and the staff of our economic development partners. So look at that plan, look at what we've done, look at what we still need to do, and have a discussion of, are there additional projects and actions that we need to be thinking about to move the strategic goals and objectives forward? So Jody Christensen, our special projects manager, is here. She's leading that effort with the MEVLC in coordination with all the staff of our economic development partners, which is the Downtown Association, Visit McMinnville, the McMinnville Economic Development Partnership, the Chamber, and the city. So I wanted to share that with you. And then also wanted to let you know, we've gotten a couple of complaints about trees in terms of limbs over the public right-of-way. So we do have a code that requires trees be limbed up, so to speak, eight feet from the public right-of-way on our local streets and 15 feet on our arterials. That's to prevent those limbs from hitting trucks and RVs and other things of that nature. Since we've gotten some complaints, we will be going out with code enforcement, and we'll be hanging door knockers for people who need to do tree trimming for their street trees. So just be aware of that, and if you get any phone calls, let us know. But we'll be making that concerted effort here in the next couple of weeks.
Jody, did you have something to add? Okay. James Afton.
Good evening. I've got some great updates tonight. Cypress and Fellows finished paving and striping for Phase 1, 2, and 3, and the contractor out there is currently working on some additional ADA ramps that the city authorized with Amendment 1 to the contract in Phase 4. You have tonight on your consent agenda Resolution 2025-47, recommending a second contract amendment. That would be to add paving in that Phase 4. The pavement would extend from where Phase 3 ended at Locust and all the way to the north to Second Street. So we'd be able to finish that corridor. Savings from better-than-expected subgrade conditions. We reduced asphalt thickness on Phase 2. We used a little bit of contingency. That paid for all of Amendment 1, which is all the ADA ramps in Phase 4. And we have really competitive rates with our current contract. And we do have enough money in the approved budget to cover, and we do have time this summer to also do that paving project to the north, should you choose to approve that resolution. If approved, we believe we could complete that by the end of September this year. ARPA Midtown Basin Stormwater Project is completed. It was a great project. Our contractor did a wonderful job. We've come in substantially under budget on this project. We're expecting $100,000 to $150,000 under budget. We're still resolving some of the final numbers there. That project, we're really proud of it. We expect it to result in a 49% reduction to the flooding experienced out there. So this is a great use of ARPA dollars with real results. Proud of the staff that executed that project. In response to the tragic accident, engineering is moving forward and has authorized David Evidson Associates to collect some traffic and pedestrian data out on Southwest Sheridan Road. You may see some video cameras out there collecting that data over the next few weeks. They'll collect that, and we'll compress it and analyze it. Expect to be coming back with short-term and long-term improvements, recommendations for safety improvements out there at the intersection of Cypress and Sheridan Road. Expect to be coming back with an update on that by the end of September. That work is being contracted under our city engineering services contract that we already had in place, and it's paid for in the engineering professional services budget. Another quick update on some of the development. Hillcrest, I believe you council received notice yesterday, but...
Can you speak into the microphone? I can't, I really can't hear. We can't hear online or on the video what you're saying at all.
Is this better?
Yes, thank you.
Hillcrest drilling and blasting is permitted out there. I believe council was given a heads-up on that. That is permitted by the Fire District, and they did send out appropriate notices. We're expecting Public Utilities to begin installation next week out there, and contractor is really moving ahead at a great clip. And so far, we're seeing a great product from... Happy to answer any questions.
Jenny Berg, Library Director and Park and Rec.
It's not all fun and games at the Parks and Recreation and Library Departments, but that's the fun stuff to report to you, and so that's what I'm going to do. Soccer registration is in full swing, and they're expecting more than 500 kids to sign up. There was a refresh of the gym at the Aquatic Center, and they received a number of pieces of equipment from Planet Fitness, and there's been a lot of good feedback, including from the mayor about the gym. The Community Center and Aquatic Center will be closed the week of August 25th, and you'll want to check the website for the exact dates of that, but that's for a variety of maintenance issues that they're going to be covering. Last main week of summer fun is this week. There will be a Storytime Concert tomorrow morning at 10:00 a.m. at Upper City Park. There will also be the Last Art in the Park at Wortman Park tomorrow, 6:00 p.m. Poetry Night, not part of Summer Fun, but that's happening Thursday at the library. And then Zucchini Races. Raise your hand if you're involved in zucchini races. Yeah, all right. Zucchini races are happening Thursday afternoon at Farmer's Market. Please attend and maybe razz Councilor Chenoweth a little bit, just for fun. And then the Bookmobile continues for a couple of weeks, going out to various apartment complexes. And then something that I'm really proud of the Summer Fun staff is it's a partnership with the Nutrition Services of the school district. And they have, this was at the end of July, so I'm sure the numbers are even higher now. They've surpassed 10,000 meals served at the various sites, the Summer Fun sites. And this is a significant increase from last year. This is the last week that there will be meals at the Summer Fun sites, but then next week, kids can go to any of the elementary schools to receive food, both breakfast and lunch.
Giaff Hensacker, Public Works.
Yep. So today, we opened bids for our elevator replacement project at the Community Center. The apparent low bidder was well within the budget that we identified, which is great. Staff is doing the due diligence on that review right now, and we expect to be bringing a contract to council for approval at your next session. We took another step with the IGA with ODOT for the 99W ramps and active transportation project. The IGA is now to Department of Justice for review. So they're taking a look at that. James put in a lot of work with ODOT to get that finalized and wrapped up. And if you recall, I mentioned we were kind of going through, looking at the requirement that the right-of-way is ODOT's curb-to-curb, and behind that is the city, so we got that clarified. And then we're going to go through an MOU process to make sure we have things like permitting and maintenance all dialed in moving forward. As the mayor mentioned, we did have our ribbon cutting for our solids project out at the wastewater facility. Great project, great work done by city staff, the consultant, and the contractor. I jokingly said at the ribbon cutting that this was the most boring $20 million I've ever spent in my career, which is a huge compliment. Because at my level, if I'm hearing about a project, that means something's going wrong, and that project was smooth the whole way through. I know... For those who still want to get a tour out there, Council Geary, I know you've mentioned, please feel free to reach out to me at any time. We can set something informal up for you. And then the last one I have is we have hired a airport manager, John Pascal, who has been the airport manager in Salem for the last 14 years. It's going to be starting on September 2nd for us. I'm really excited about this hire. He's got a lot of great airport management experience and has a strong background in airport economic development, which I believe aligns very closely with the council's vision for our airport. And I can't wait for him to start, and I'll just get out of his way, and he can knock you guys' socks off.
Great. Thank you. Claudia Sisnerow, City Recorder.
So aside from the tons of minutes that I have on your consent agenda, I do want to state that Council Cunningham found my Scribner error on the June 10th meeting, page 29. Instead of recreation, it should be re-accreditation. So unless you want to pull that from the consent agenda, you'll just want to state that it's as amended, per me, with that correction. So for your next week's work session, it's canceled, so councilors can attend the city-county dinner. If you haven't RSVP'd, please let me know.
We'd really like you to come. You would normally be here.
Yeah, deadline is tomorrow, so I can let the city recorder know. And then we are scheduled for a special call meeting on Thursday, August 28th. We'll start at 12:00 p.m. Please plan to be here until we're done.
Thank you. Katie Henry, Finance Director.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to start with an update on court. We have not yet filled the extra position that was opened up during the budget. It is open right now, so if you know of anyone who is a court clerk, who wants to be a court clerk, who would be a great addition to our team, that position is open. We're accepting applications through the end of this month. And the software update has not started. We need to have this additional position in place and get caught up on some of the administrative work that is behind before we can even conceive of doing the software implementation. So there's no bandwidth right now to work on that until we get this position filled. So that is really the main goal right now, is to get someone in that position and get them trained up. The one individual that we had who was here part-time has gone full-time, and she is doing amazingly well, and so we're very pleased with that. So court is busy as always, and we're excited to bring that extra staff member. So we don't have a timeframe yet on that software implementation. On the finance side of things, we are all things year-end. So the year is coming to a close. We are wrapping up anything that has to do with the fiscal year 2025, meaning any expenditures incurred up through June 30th. You'd be surprised how many things we're still dealing with even now that happened in May and June, and that we're still tidying up the books so we can close them. The auditors will be here in September, so there's not much longer to get the books closed and get those done. One thing I do want you all to look out for is the work session that will be coming at our next meeting on the 26th. It will be an entirely finance work session. There'll be three parts to it. We'll be doing the not-quite-as-much-fund-more-business at the beginning, and then at the end, we will be going over the transparency portal, where we will be launching that so that you can see it. It's not fully developed out, but there will be availability for the first set of budget-to-actual reports, the visuals the citizens will be able to see during that work session. So we will go over finally being able to see the launch of that transparency portal. And we have just started, it's the same software that we are using for budget software, so we are working on our first supplemental budget that will happen in September. And internally, all of our directors are now getting a chance to see what that budget software looks like from the inside and working on supplemental adjustments through that software on the inside. So we're making progress.
Great. Thank you. Noel Amaya, Communications Manager.
Good evening. So just a couple of things for you all tonight. The Innovation Campus survey is open until this Friday. The fruits of our labor actually paid off ever so slightly last week when we were handing out the small flyers that we had with QR codes on them over there at the farmer's market. We did have an increase over the weekend of about 30 survey takers, which is awesome. As Mayor Morris said, she joined me for the first bid at the farmer's market last week. And as a heads-up to the city councilors, I will plan to be there again on August 28th from about 12:00 to 4:00 p.m. So I would love to have a city councillor join me, if any of you are interested. You don't have to stay the whole time, but if there's a portion that you are available, just please reach out to me and let me know. Lots of folks I spoke to throughout the day were really interested in learning more about the CPR bond project. So I will be working together with Jenny Berg to make sure that we have some neutral information, of course, to share for that project, since our city communications are now under safe harbor requirements. I'm also supporting our Emergency Management Coordinator to help get the word out about their Free Emergency Preparedness event at Schumacher Community College. That will be held on Thursday, September 21st, from 10:00 to 1:00 p.m. That is open to the public and to the whole community. So if you are interested in learning more about emergency preparedness here in Yamhill County or in McMinnville better, please attend it and tell your networks. I will also be supporting the Southwest Area Plan and their planning for their September 13th Community Design Workshop. That is going to happen on a Saturday, so please mark your calendars. That event will go from 10:00 to 12:00 p.m., and that's all I have for you.
Thank you.
Mayor, before we move on to David's item, can I also just state that...
Mayor, before we move on to David's item, can I also just state that today is City Hall selfie day? So everyone who wants to go take a selfie at City Hall, don't forget to hashtag #CityHallSelfie so everyone can know that our city of Big Bendville is out there as well.
So will there be daylight when we leave?[620.04][620.04][laughter] We'll see. Vicki had just, I don't see her online. What did she?
She said she had nothing to report.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Now we're going to go to the consent agenda. Does any?
Sorry, Mayor, I have a presentation on this part of the agenda before that.
Oh, okay.
If I may.
Yes.
For your information, when you passed Resolution 2025-44, that was the workshop ballot title. That also included the authority to the city manager or designee to put together an informational statement. That informational statement is limited to 500 words, and while it is also limited to the same standards of impartiality, it has the opportunity to do further explanation than the briefer requirements of what you looked at already. Since you've already delegated that authority, this has been drafted, it's been presented here for your information, and if you have anything that you would like to ask, we'd be happy to entertain those questions.
I do have a question. So I read through it, and I just had a question, just to voice a concern, I guess. When we have the listing on what we had talked about previously for our ballot title, and then we have a list here of improved parks and open spaces, it kind of grows. So we have added at the bottom expanded skate park amenities and a non-motorized boat launch, which
Mayor, do you have the page number?
Yes, I am on 16. So why they may be in the PROS plan, which is probably where it came from and why it's there, I just still have a concern of the amount of money we may have and that this says proposed, but when they're listed specifically like that, it becomes more of a citizen believing it's going to happen. And when there's so many there, and again, concern about what-ifs, I have to just express my concern about that. And, but I do like the fact that it's clearer in this document than it was clear in the previous document, that it's going to be $1.79 eventually for the citizens. Starts at 95, but then it does change to go to $1.79 per thousand with bonds dropping off and these coming back on. So those are my comments. Does anybody have any, I don't know who to talk to. Jenny, would that be you? About adding that?
I hear you about the additional bullet points, and you are correct that it came from the PROS plan, and we certainly can give that some more thought and consideration.
I would think, I would like to have that considered because we had talked about previously, actually quite a lot with Susan Muir, and about improvements to parks and trying to be a little bit more vague because it basically tends to be a little bit lower on the totem pole, I'm going to say. When you have the rec center, you have the aquatic center, you have the senior center, library, and then parks. We may not necessarily get to every park. We may not to get to all the things in the PROS plan. So listing some things, more things that were talked than were talked about before, doesn't mean it's not going to happen, but my concern is listing them here makes them feel like they're going to happen.
I, I hear, and I totally understand where you're coming from. There is a, there is a, and I don't know where it is, a delineation in, we will get to all these things until this point, and then we won't get to those things. And, and you're worried that we're pushing that to, we're putting too many things in the, we will get these done, and I don't know where that line is. So, you know, I don't have an answer, but you're, but you guys are spot on. We've, we've pulled these through feedback from that, that, that first, you know, five-year short-term plan in the PROS plan. I will say, as those decisions get made, as, as other projects get done, and they do or don't take up, you know, bond capacity and other decisions are made to ensure that those priority projects can get done, I would say specifically motorized, non-motorized boat launch has been high on a feedback list and would think that would be something that would get prioritized. So as far as looking at this list, I think that's a good one to, to maintain on there. But yeah, like I said, I don't know where that line is of what is or isn't, so.
Yeah. I don't know where the line is either, but I just have to express my concern.
And Mayor Mina as well.
Zalsky.
Nobody in this city probably wants a non-motorized boat launch more than me. But when I see this written down here on the proposed projects, it tells me that I'm going to get that, and so that's what concerns me. And if we're not very clear that we may or may not receive these, and this is a proposal that may not be fulfilled, then I believe that we're over-promising and we're setting ourselves up to under-deliver. And I, I think that that would be an accidental, I don't want to use bait and switch, but like just an accidental deception of the taxpayer if they believe that they're getting a boat launch and it's bottom on the list and we never get to it. So things like that do concern me. If we could include that, it's great, but I would like to make sure that it's very clear that it's, it's a nice-to-have, not a shall-have. Yeah. Thank you.
Any other comments? Counselor Chenoweth?
Yeah, and I would third this comment about being concerned about over-promising and under-delivering. But honestly, I think the bigger issue that is going to come back to bite us is if the actual cost of the bond is higher than what we're promoting it as. When we're saying it's 95 cents per thousand, and at the end of the day, the actual cost of the bond for, for the majority of it is going to be $1.79 with an average cost closer to $1.63, $1.62, somewhere in that range. That to me is going to be the thing that I think the taxpayers are going to complain about the loudest and hold us accountable for. So I have very strong concerns about that wording.
Counselor Peralta?
Thank you. I just want to make sure I understand what I'm reading there. This doesn't say that the cost of this bond will increase from 95 cents to $1.79. It's actually enumerating the total bond obligations at the time the bond's passed. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I thought. Thank you.
So you have the, make sure we understand this. So the average price through the life of the, this bond, with the two bonds, is about $1.63, the average.
When you say the two bonds?
Because we're pulling two bonds, is what the bond
I thought
Company?[1088.83][1088.83][laughter]
I thought the $1.79 was everything that we have currently bonded.
Is right now, and then those fall off, and then the second bond takes over.
Right. The $1.79 is what, what the pay, pay is going to be, assuming we don't replace the bonds that fall off. So in, in essence, what the actual total bill is going to be for taxpayers will stay roughly at $1.79. But the actual cost of this particular bond standing by itself in absence of what's falling off is on average about $1.63 over the life of it. And, and I think it's important that we make that clear because the assumption that we're not going to come back and renew another bond is not a safe assumption. And I don't think it's a fair message to deliver to the taxpayers when what typically happens when you have a major bond go off the tax rolls is the council at the time will come back and say, let's rebond, rebond this thing because it's going away. So I just, I don't think that's a fair message to be delivering.
But this, the statement is this bond, when approved, will add 95 cents per thousand to your tax bill.
That's the statement.
It's not this bond will cost you $1.79.
This first bond.
I understand the wording that we're using, and I get, I get the semantics, but the actual cost of the bond is $1.63 per thousand over the life of the bond on average. That's the cost of the bond.
I don't think that's, I don't think this is the tax discussion that we're having, but I don't think that's accurate.
Yeah, there is a second bond that comes on, though.
There are two phases, and so this is spread over, but there's also multiple things that roll off.
Right.
And so, so this bond adds 95 cents per $1,000 in assessed value when successful.
Which bond?
This initial, this, this whole, the whole package.
The whole package, so both bonds add 95 cents? Or is it just the first bond?
Uh, I don't, uh, it's, what you're looking at, the 98 and a half million dollars.
Which includes two bonds.
However phased, correct.
Yes.
The 98 and a half million dollars that you're approving, this, the authority you're giving the city to draw 98 and a half billion dollars will add 95 cents per thousand in assessed value.
Total or for the first bond?
Total. For the 98 and a half million dollars.
That's not how I understood it, Ben.
No, it adds
May I speak, Mayor?
$1.63 per avera, per, on average, over the life of the, it's going to
Clarification?
It's $1.63, but there is some others that are going to drop off. And what, what the wording is doing is taking the, the advantage of using the money that's dropping off to make it feel like the effects of this are less than they actually are.
Okay, I'm going to go to Finance Director Katie Henry. Would you like to jump in here?
I just want to make sure that, that it is very clear what is happening, what the intention of the city is, the city being the, the finance staff and the consultants that I'm working with on this bond issuance. The goal, our goal for our citizens is to have the most stable rate for our debt that we can give them over the extended period of time. So in order to do this, we know that we will have the bonds being issued in a couple pieces. We don't need the full 98 million at once. We can break it into two pieces. So for the years where we still have the remaining other debt, we're taking out the first chunk, a smaller piece, so that we raise the total, the total debt, the total bond that we need to issue to be that $1.79 per thousand for those first years where the other debt is starting to fall off. Then, once the other debt has all fallen off, we issue that second bond, which brings the total up to that $1.79 for the remaining life of both, of the entire 98 million. So everyone who is speaking, you are all actually correct. Yes, there's an average. Yes, the average is less than $1.79. Yes, the average is higher than 95 cents. Yes, it's covering the whole 98 million. The point for the citizens and the point that we as the financial people, our goal is to provide the citizens with a stable rate for their property taxes. That stable rate, our best estimate is that it will be 95 cents higher than the bonded debt rates on their 2025 taxes. So that is where the 95 cents comes in. If you look at your 2025 tax bill, you add 95 cents per thousand to your bonded debt rate, that is what we estimate the bonded debt rate to be over the life of these bonds. That's the message we're trying to convey.
Counselor Chenoweth.
Yeah, I totally understood that to begin with. My frustration is going to be when they get their tax bill and they look on their tax bill and it doesn't say 95 cents per thousand for this item. That we're going to have people that are looking at their tax bill and saying, are going to say to us, you know what, your city told us that this was going to be a 95 cents per thousand bill, and it's not. And I, I don't want to be in the position, again, of trying to explain what could have been better explained to begin with. I would like wording that makes it very clear that the actual cost of this bill is $1.79 per thousand at the full-fledged with an average of $1.63 over the course and an actual field price of 95 cents per thousand. I'd be good with that. But the way that we're doing it is going to lead people to a conclusion that this thing is costing less than it's actually costing. And I don't think that is some, a place we want to be put in. That's my two cents.
Sorry, Counselor Chenoweth, may I ask a quick question? Are you referring to the language in, in this explanatory statement at the top of the second page, which talks about those dollar numbers? Because what I read specifically is taxpayers will be assessed an estimated additional, additional 95 cents for each $1,000 in assessed value with taxpayers paying a total of $1.79 per thousand. It sounds to me like that's generally what you're looking for. I guess my question was, is your concern with what we previously talked about in the ballot title or with this explanatory statement?
To be honest, my bigger concern is with the general dialogue that's occurring, that, that the message that's coming out from the council that I'm hearing and from those that are pushing this, this measure, is that this is going to, this is a bond that has a cost of 95 cents per thousand, and I think that's going to hurt us. Going back to my initial statements on how I feel about this bond, the need for a new pool or, or work to be done on our pool to get us to a level that it should be at and our community center is inarguable. What I don't want is something that at the end of the day, we're getting bite back because we weren't as clear and transparent as we should have been during the process. And I'm concerned that in the, in the, in the rush for sales pitch, that the way it's being described is at a lesser cost than it really actually is going to be. That's where my bigger concern is.
So I asked the question. So thank, thank you. Does the description here, as vetted by the Finance Department, Finance Director, is that more satisfying than, than I suppose the general dialogue that you're talking about?
Can you restate it for me?
Sure. It, in your packet, I don't know on which page, 17?
It's H17.
If this measure is approved, taxpayers will be assessed an estimated additional 95 cents for each $1,000 in assessed value with taxpayers paying a total of $1.79 per $1,000 for all city bond obligations.
Yeah, I guess I can't have an argument about that specific statement, no.
Okay.
The only thing, I guess I would just say is just to making it clear to the citizens that when those bonds that we already have are paid off, their rate isn't going down. It's being replaced. So I think that needs to be clear to people that it's not just 90, a raise of 95 cents. It is when those get paid off, they're being replaced, and it'll still be the $1.79 there. Correct? Is that what? So it averages out because it's smaller at the beginning and then you add the other. So it averages out to be about $1.63, 64 cents
Now, are
Over the lifetime of the bonds.
Are you talking about the explanatory statement or the general messaging from the city?
Is there a way to make that a little clearer or not? Because it says 95 and then total of, can we add an average in there?
I would
For the bonds or not? I know you
May I speak?
Katie doesn't want to do it. Yes, go ahead.
We cannot put an average for the bond, and we cannot split one bond from the city's total debt. It is extremely important that, that everyone understands this, that the bonded debt, the way that we assess bonded debt is for the city's total bonded debt, not for an individual bond issuance. I cannot stress that enough. I know that several of you and several people on various committees everywhere have tried to say, this is the price for this issuance. That's not how it works. That's not how the law works, and I really need that to not be part of the dialogue. I have insisted from the beginning on this that that $1.79 be included. I have talked to the newspaper, I have talked to everyone, and I have fought long and hard to make sure that this is in the explanatory statement because I did not want the wool pulled over anyone's eyes. So I just want to make, make it very clear So I just want to make, make it very clear that I have insisted on that full $1.79 being there. I've also referred anyone who has asked for clarification back to the work session, where we have that graph that shows the previous debt issuances and where they stop, the amounts that we would be paying on them, and then the new debt and how that overlaps adding up to that $1.79 with the differences each year. So I've sent that to the newspaper. I've sent that to whoever has asked. I've referred them back to those places. So have they said, yes, it would be an additional 95 cents? Yes, the consultant has recommended that we use that wording. I have pushed back and said, I'm not comfortable with only using the 95 cents, and I have insisted we use this $1.79. They have listened to what I have recommended and put it in this explanatory statement here. I am very appreciative of the city attorney for allowing me to phrase that statement that way. My expectation is that it has addressed the concerns that I'm hearing here. But I can't push enough for you to, to tell you that you can't use an average for the bond because taxes for bonded debt are not levied at the individual issuance. They're, they're levied for the total city debt, and that's where that phrase in the sentence, per thousand of all city bond obligations, is used in that explanatory statement. That's the best we can do in order to address that from a legal standpoint as far as how bonded debt levies are, how bonded debt taxes are levied. That's the verbiage.
Okay. Councilor Tokolski has a question.
Director Henry, this question is for you. The MACPAC is actually pushing out information right now that states that it's 95 cents per thousand assessed and that it's going to cost the average taxpayer $18 per month. And that's at the 95 cents per 1,000. Is that something that you agree with?
I have, I agree that it is that much more than they're currently paying. I personally would not use that phrasing because I feel like it doesn't address the fact that these other bonds are falling off pretty much, well, just one year before we get started on them. I, I don't like the phrasing personally of saying it's 95 cents. It's, it's $1.79.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, it sounds like that is a statement that needs to stay that way. That's legal. And any other questions? So is there a resolution with this?
There's not. We don't need council action on this. The authority has already been delegated. We appreciate the input. If there are changes moving forward, when we take the looks that you've requested, we take a look, we will make sure that gets pushed out to you.
Mayor, can I say one more thing?
Councilor Chenoweth?
Thank you for your clarification and, and the way in which you approached that. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Katie, or Director Henry, sorry. Okay, now I'm going to go to the consent agenda. Is there anything that would like to be pulled off the consent agenda? Okay, Councilor Chenoweth, what would you like to have pulled off the consent agenda?
L.
Okay, I had that to pull off as well. Anything else? I'd like to pull off also O. Anything else? Nope. Okay, so do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda with pulling off L, pulling off O, and the amendment for the Scribner error for June 10th?
So moved.
So I have a motion from Councilor Chenoweth?
Second.
A second from Councilor Cunningham. Claudia?
Councilor Geary?
Hi.
Councilor Cunningham?
Aye.
Councilor Tokolski?
Aye.
Councilor Chenoweth?
Aye.
And Council President Peralta?
Yes.
And the consent agenda has passed unanimously by a vote of five to zero.
Do I have my fingers there? Okay, now we're going to look at L, which is Consider Resolution Number 2025-45, a resolution to participate in the new national opioid settlements with Purdue and Alvegin, Amneal, Apotex, Hikma, and why did we do this? Indiviner, Mylan Sun, and Zitis, and authorizing the city attorney to take all action to effectuate that participation. Okay, I'm going to let you start, Councilor Chenoweth, see if we have the same question.
Thank you. I have two questions.
On page 66, councilors.
Do we have an idea what the amount of money is involved here?
That's a good question. We're talking about two different new settlements in this case, and I'm trying to remember dollar amounts in each one. The city is, has this wild decimal of an apportionment under this whole scheme. I don't, I don't remember the last time that I looked at a total. I'm sorry.
It'd be kind of cool to just know the estimate of what that's going to turn out to be.
I'd be happy to look it up and get it to you.
And then, and I know you can't, I won't, I won't hold you to it because I know good and well that this can change. We have a percentage, but what does that actually work out to be?
Yeah.
I get it. And then the second question I have you already answered, which was the way in which it was worded, I couldn't tell if this was one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine agreements or two. And your statement at the beginning of your first answer answered that question, so thank you.
That's correct. There are two. To be very clear, one is with Purdue. That one, we don't have the paperwork for yet. I'm seeking advanced authorization because I know it's coming. The other ones have come. We have the paperwork, and I'll sign as soon as you pass the resolution.
I have another question that I just, on, where it's on the resolution. Number two, the city attorney is authorized to take all action to effectuate that participation. What all action are we talking? Is it fiscal, financial in any way?
At this point, it is signing a DocuSign.
Okay. Okay, um, let's, let's do this one separately. So do I have a motion to accept Resolution Number 2025-45, a resolution to participate in the new national opioid settlement with Purdue? And I'm not going to name them all.
So moved.
Second.
So I have a motion from Councilor Tokolski and a second from Councilor Peralta. Yeah.
Why did you? Oh, I thought I heard.
Oh, was it Councilor Cunningham? I'm sorry.
It doesn't matter.
Councilor Geary?
Aye.
Councilor Cunningham?
Aye.
Councilor Tokolski?
Aye.
Councilor Chenoweth?
Aye.
Council President Peralta?
Yes.
Resolution Number 2025-45 passes unanimously by a vote of five to zero.
Now we're going to look at O, which is Consider Resolution 2025-48, a resolution adopting an updated edition of the airport minimum standards for commercial aeronautical activities. And is this, Geoff? Could you just explain this a little bit, please?
Actually, Willie is online. He will do a much better job explaining it than I will.
Okay, you're on, Willie.
Hi, hello, Mayor, councilors. This is a, an update to the existing minimum standards for commercial aeronautical activities. The FAA and the state, while not absolutely requiring, they strongly suggest that all airports receiving federal funding have this type of a document. There has been one here for quite a few years, and we updated it in 2022 with a requirement to review it after two years and update it again if necessary. So what I have done with this one, this version, is I've just clarified a variety of things, taken out a bunch of redundancies. You know, for instance, if, if one, if an FBO has a flight school, then there's an SASO, a single activity operator that has a flight school, they should say the same thing. And, well, now they, they do, except I basically just clarified it for everyone. And so that was primarily what the goal was. There's a few other things that I did, which was take out some technical information, like what kind of, of technical fuel measurements there are and stuff like that that is totally irrelevant in a document like this. So that cleaned that up quite a bit, too. And I have also taken out a couple of items that are for just average tenants and not commercial activities at, you know, for instance, a self-fueling portion. And it was determined, you know, by me, the airport commission, the commercial operators, and the non-commercial tenants, everybody's like, well, this doesn't need to be in there. And I totally agree with that. And in fact, I even talked to, to my replacement about it, and he agrees. So that's generally what this was supposed to do, and we do have, have a requirement to review this in another five years.
Okay, thank you so much. Any questions from the council? Okay, so do I have a motion to consider Resolution Number 2025-48 or to accept the resolution adopting an updated edition of the airport minimum standards for commercial aeronautical activities?
I sub motion.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilor Tokolski and a second from Councilor Peralta.
Councilor Geary?
Hi.
Councilor Cunningham?
Aye.
Councilor Tokolski?
Aye.
Councilor Chenoweth?
Aye.
Council President Peralta?
Yes.
Resolution Number 2025-48 passes unanimously by a vote of five to zero.
Perfect. And I just want to note that in the res, the consent agenda, we had Resolution 2025-46, which was appointing Adam Garvin to the position of city manager on an interim basis and authorizing the execution of an employment agreement, which we have done in the consent agenda. And Adam will be our interim city manager, who's in the back of the room, starting Monday. Congratulations. So the city council will now go into an executive session. We will, I have something to read here. Da, 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 da. Sorry. This is, just a second. Maybe I have the date wrong.
The top of page four.
Hmm? Why? Yeah, this is wrong. Okay, the city council will be going into conference room for a close to the public executive session pursuant to ORS 192.6602H, consult with council concerning the legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. Does any council need to declare an actual or potential conflict of interest or recuse themselves regarding the executive session for the record? Nope. I will now adjourn the city council meeting at 8:03.
The Third Street Improvement Project is focused on enhancing safety, accessibility, and flexibility, all while preserving what makes downtown McBendel special. Beginning June 27th, you can explore a demonstration block between Evans and Ford to get a firsthand look at proposed design elements. Tape and stencils will mark sidewalks, tree wells, and planter locations, features designed to calm traffic, widen pedestrian space, and support outdoor activities. This project responds directly to community input. People ask for a downtown that works for all ages and abilities, supports local businesses, and accommodates events like Matt Fresco without losing its charm. The design will introduce a curbless street, improved lighting, and new grading to meet federal accessibility standards. Clearly defined walking, driving, and parking areas will allow the street to shift seamlessly between daily use and community gatherings. By scanning QR codes on site, visitors may access immersive 360-degree panoramas of the proposed design. From marked viewpoints, you'll be able to step into the reimagined streetscape and look around at new furnishings, trees, and features. We invite you to walk the block and explore the concept. We hope to see you there.